So, welcome everybody to one hundred and sixty fourth meeting of of Kashmir speakers club. So, our mission statement is all that empowers you to become a brilliant communicator and a confident leader. We'll actively build a better world. And today, some housekeeping rules I like to say before we begin is because this is a virtual meeting, I would request you to mute yourself if you're not speaking. And unmute yourself when you want to speak or raise your hand so that one of the people here can tell us that someone's raising their hand. Another thing is please concentrate on the speaker when they're speaking. Because they, each of the speakers and role takers here have prepared themselves always or even more. So I would request you to respect that. Those are the housekeeping rules. So before we continue, I'd like for the guests to introduce themselves. Any, any guest who like to, you know, come up and introduce themselves, short introduction. Okay, Fred. Please.
You are audible Fred.
So, sorry, I was muted on my headset. I'm Fred Jones in Canada and I've been working with Ravi for some youth programs and youth clubs in Nepal. And also I like joining your sessions because I sees how you're working and how Agra works in Nepal. So I appreciate being appreciate being here. Thank you.
Thank you very much Fred. Now, the next guest Akshay. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, everyone. It's me Akshay Za. I'm from Sainikawarsyah Mahavidyala, Salagari, Bhaktapur. And I'm feeling very happy to join this meeting today.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome to you. Next, we have, okay, thank you Sneha Adhikari.
Thank you so much sir. Hello and Namaste to all the respected members present over here. It's me Sneha Adhikari from Youth Agora Speakers Pokra. So firstly, let me thank AS sponsors for inviting me to today's session. And this wishes to all the speakers as well as to all the role takers and I'm sure that I will surely have a great time here. Thank you.
Thank you very much Sneha. Now we have Prasanna Maynal.
Hello, everyone. It's Prasanna Maynal. And I was invited by my teacher Durga M. And I'm excited about the classes. What, what is it all about?
Okay, thank you very much. This is not a class. I don't think we're here to study something. We're here to, you know, better our communication skill and leadership skills. It's not really a class. It's more like a self-improvement club. And last but not the least, we have Monisha Kalal. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. It's me Monisha Kalal from KNC Police. Thank you for inviting me.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, those were all the guests. Today, our meeting leader is our speaker Paul Joshi. He's the president of our club. He's a very, how do I say this? He's a very hardworking person. He works, he's a banker by profession. And I don't need to say anything about him because today you'll see in the meeting how, you know, epic he is at what he does. So with a big round of applause, I'd like to welcome our meeting leader, our speaker Paul Joshi, please.
Thank you so much Pratik for your wonderful introduction. Today, we are in a hundred and sixty fourth meeting of Kashmir speakers club. Where we improve our public speaking, leadership, communication, public relation and many more skills. There are only many skills where you can improve during these sort of clubs. And with a brand new meeting today, we have various sort of roles. To all the guests who are thinking about what Kashmir speakers club, what our speaker internationally is. It is a nonprofit organization where we develop our communication, leadership, public speaking, public relation skills by interacting with each other, by learning from others, by getting evaluated, by evaluating others. Giving speeches on different project, giving improper speeches and many more where you will learn what all this meeting goes when you stay till the end of the meeting. So let's begin our meeting formally. We have a three session today. The first session will be the hot topic session where our hot topic master will share you few topics and you have to speak for one to two minutes. And next session is prepared speech session where our prepared speaker will deliver either horse piece. And I'll, and we'll get to know about our species in that session. Final session is the meeting evaluation session where our meeting evaluator will evaluate all the meeting and share us his or her feedback or any insight for the meeting. Let's move to our first session, which is hot appreciation. But before that, I would like to introduce you role takers for today. So today we have grammarianers who is here to take all your good and bad uses of the grammar. Our speaker Konshan Rajgiri. I would like to request, Konshan, please introduce yourself and your role.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm your grammarian for the day. So a good use of grammar always increases the credibility of the speaker. So today I will be checking the correctness of your grammar. I will point out the incorrect use as well as appreciate the exceptionally well use of grammar. Likewise, the word of the day today is vexing, which, which is an adjective, which means extremely annoying or displeasing. One of the example is the most vexing questions for policymakers. It can also be used as a verb. Which also means the same make someone feel annoyed. So the example is the memory of the conversation still vexed him. So if you are using the word of the day, we will appreciate you with a round of applause. I mean with clap, watch your clap. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Konshan. And I hope most of the members will use word of the day in their speeches or during their speeches and whenever they are speaking. So let's move to our second role for today. We have filler counter as our speaker Nirmala K C. So I would like to request speaker Nirmala, will you please introduce yourself and your role, please?
First of all, good morning to everybody. Today I am a filler old counter. So, so in filler old counter, I will count the ah who short words, long pause and repetitions in the space when, when the speaker are in front of the sessions. Then the phrases and the word which makes either her space very unmeaningful and jargon that makes the audience not sounds good. So at last I will give the report of that filler word counters. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Nirmala. And next role for now is to our speaker Kinzel Strasser. See the timer for today. So I would like to request Kinzel, will you please introduce yourself and your role?
So, good morning, everyone. And in today's meeting, I'm going to take the role of timer. And so I'm going to count your timing report and as well as say that your timing report at the end of this meeting. And if you reach the time limit, so I will show you the green card. And if you are about to reach the end of the timing, so I'll show you this yellow one. And if you reach your time in time, so I'll show you the red one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much Kinzel. We appointed our speaker, we put Roy as a meeting evaluator, but he couldn't add in the meeting, I think due to his personal problem. And there are many members who are not here due to, you know, meeting. They have meeting from their own offices as well. So those meetings cannot also be avoided. So I would like to request our speaker Pratik to tell, take this role of meeting evaluator and introduce our meeting will be evaluated and how will you be performing your role?
Okay, thank you very much, meeting leader. So as the evaluator today, I will be conducting the first and the last session, evaluation session. In which we'll have a direct speakers, I'll call the direct evaluator for the direct speakers. And then as you saw the role takers before our inactive actors, they'll be evaluating the speeches that they will be evaluating and giving their reports right there. And in the end, I'll be also giving an overall evaluation about how the meeting went, how it was prepared till now, how the meeting leader did, hot topic session, everything as well. So please stay in tune for that. Thank you. Back to you, meeting leader.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Speaker Pratik. Today, meeting theme is attitude is everything. So we'll have a thematic discussion after our prepared situation where we have only one speaker today. So I would like to request all of you to get some ideas till our thematic discussion session comes. So our theme for today is attitudes is everything. So what do you think of attitude? What sort of attitude you should have in particular situation? So I'll come to you, most of you people at, you know, during our thematic discussion session. But let's start our first session for today. The first session is hot topic session, which is also an improper session. So to conduct this session, I would like to request speaker Rosni. Speaker Rosni, the microphone is yours now.
Thank you so much sir. First of all, I want to say sorry because due to network issue, I can't open my camera. I hope you will not mind, everyone. And happy Eid to everyone. As we know today is Eid, so Eid Mawarak. And I'm, today I'm your hot topic master. So I have, I have three questions for you all. And the hot topic session is mainly designed for our guests. So I would like to encourage our guests to participate in this session. So you will have two minutes for each topic. And I would like to say you that please, whenever you want to speak about the specific topic, please open your microphone and please raise your hand. So let's go on. So my first question is, what motivates you to be your best version? Anyone, please feel free to answer. And I would like to request our guests.
If anyone wants to speak, they can raise their hand.
Would you like to answer? It's not that much hard, I think.
We can hear from Sneha. She is so excited to speak always. I can see, I saw how you go for this meeting. Sneha, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Should I repeat the question? Yes, you're.
What motivate you to be your best version?
Actually, I just get motivated with everything around me, with people or I get motivated to when I play the keyboard, you know, I just love music and I love to play keyboard and whenever I play it, I just feel a kind of motivated and that's all.
It's okay. So I have next question. It's what's one downside of the modern day world? I repeat, what's one downside of the modern day world?
I guess this question is for Fred.
Do you like to answer?
Yeah, thank you very much, Hot Topics Master. And Pawan for suggesting I answer this. What are some of the disadvantages of the modern day world? Well, the world's always been full of challenges and today it's nothing different. And it's how people react. I think the human nature is we want to have a comfortable life and have everything stay the same. But the world is changing and has always been changing. But in today's world is changing faster and faster. And so the challenge for everyone is to adapt to change. And that, I believe, the ability to adapt to change is a wonderful characteristic to develop. Because when you change and things are different, you learn so much and you become a better person because you have to adapt to things you probably would not have done if it wasn't for the change. So that's the challenge that we face more so today than probably previous decades. But it will continue and it'll continue even more at a more rapid pace. So I suggest all of us look at being able to adapt to the change that is being thrown at us in today's world. Madam, Hot Topics Master.
Thank you so much, Fred. So the last one is, what kind of attitude you have? It's related to our topic. What kind of attitude you have?
Akshay, are you excited to speak on this topic?
Sir, can I get the question repeated, please?
Sure. What kind of attitude you have?
So attitude is reflected by the set of behaviors that we show every day. And the attitude that I have towards anyone would be surely the reflection of the behavior they show to me. And it's always better to have a better attitude towards other person because you get very much good things in return. You get a chance to know the world in a different way. You get a chance to be loved by everyone. That's all.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone. It was a great session. Back to you, meeting leader.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Rosni, for conducting this session. And you know, this session is called an improper session. If you can speak well, or you can speak fluently in this session, you know, within one to two minutes instantly, then you can master prepared session. So this is, we call this session as a warm-up session for the prepared speech session. So next session we have is prepared speech session and we have only one speaker from the, our speaker project manual. And he is our speaker, Ruskin Marzan. Talking about Ruskin, he is also excited to speak. I think he wants to learn more and more. And he is finance analyst as Dharma Foundation, if I'm wrong. So please help you welcome our speaker Ruskin. And he will be evaluated by speaker Pratik. And his project is speaking things about you like. So I would like to request speaker Pratik, will you please highlight his objectives?
Thank you, meeting leader. So our speaker Ruskin is going to be giving a speech on the project, speaking about things you like, which is the second project in the educational path. Now, the things that he'll have to do right now is simple. All he'll have to do is stand in front of the audience or virtual meeting, speak about something familiar with confidence. You don't need to care about, take care about anything else for four minutes, at least two minutes, just speak about what you like without have been confident. I'll be evaluating you on the speech structure, very little speech structure. Maybe I'll also even say, you know, what kind of speech you gave so that you can look forward in the future about what type of speech I want to give. That's it really. Your time is two to four minutes and all the best. I'll be listening to your speech. All the best, Ruskin.
And you, Pratik, and the meeting leader and all the facilitators here. We all have one thing in common, whether we are in thirties or in twenties or in forties. And the thing that I'm talking about is our personal finance management. A lot of people do a lot of things to manage their finance, some work the day jobs, start new businesses, some invest in real states. And personally, what I like, how I like to manage my personal finance is saving a little from my salary and invest in stock markets consistently. Now, why I like investing in stock market? There are several reasons. The first one is the obvious one. Stock market provides a provides an option for you to invest for the higher return, of course, with the higher risk. So here we are, the younger audience, we have the capability of taking risk because we are in mid twenties or thirties. So because of that, we can take risk and there is a potential for higher return. And or I would like to give you an example how, one small example of how this return can help you. Ten years ago, when I was five, my uncle actually subscribed to IQ shares of a bank of worth only five thousand rupees. Today, that five thousand rupees is converted into six lakhs rupees with the six hundred thousand rupees. And if my uncle would have invested that five thousand rupees in fixed deposit, let's say at ten percent for twenty five years, that would have been only two hundred thousand rupees. So if he had done that, I would have been vexing right now. So the difference between this six hundred thousand and two hundred thousand rupees is the excess return that you are getting by taking the excess risk. The second reason why I like about investing in stock market is the platform it provides for you to learn. Now, when I entered into the stock market, I didn't know anything about the banking sectors. I didn't know anything about the high level stocks. So when I decided to invest, I did some research. It has to be done. When I put my money in the stock markets, I have to follow news. I have to read the fiscal policies, monetary policies, everything. So especially for students, it provides a good platform, makes you, it forces you to study and learn about the market. Now, the final reason why I like investing in stock market is it's relatively easier. Ten years back, our stock market was not sophisticated. You have to invest. We had to trade the physical sales. Now everything is online. You can sit at the, sit in your home with two clicks, you can trade shares, you can invest as small amount as five thousand rupees. So even if you are student, you don't have to worry about it. If you have only twenty thousand, twenty five thousand rupees, you can invest in sitting in a room. Now, I had a bitter experience five years ago and I was investing by going to the brokers and calling them. So I felt kind of embarrassed of trading only the minimum amount of investment of only around twenty thousand, twenty thousand rupees. While there were other investors who were trading hundred thousand rupees, ten hundred million rupees. So that was kind of embarrassing. But now with the online, there is no such problems. Anyone can invest from any corner. So in summary, what I'd like to say is that especially for students or especially if you have not invested in stock market, please take a look in the stock market. It can be one of the means for your personal finance management. And of course, if you need any help in the administrative issues and investment in the stock market, you can contact me because I can help you on, I can help you signing off for the different accounts. Thank you, meeting leader. Back to you.
Thank you so much, Speaker Ruskin, for your wonderful speech. It was quite as a guest for us that many of us may not know about stock market and probably they will definitely contact you if they need any sort of assistance, assistance in investing in, you know, stock market. And now we can, let's discuss about some thematic session. So attitude is everything. What do you think of attitude? Or what sort of attitude you should have when you are office, when you are at home, when you are with friends? This is the most important thing that a person should have. A person with good attitude is liked by all, is obvious. And if a person has bad attitude, not liked by all. Maybe in front of that person, they show some sort of sympathy, but after that is ignored. So to talk about more, I would like to request speaker Konshan. So what do you think of attitude? So maybe you can share your experiences from your office or your personal life. So what sort of attitude should a person have? Speaker Konshan. Your microphone is muted.
Thank you, meeting leader. Talking about attitude, I remember a quote. Your attitude is like a price tag. It shows how valuable you are. So I totally believe in this quote and attitude. Are you listening to me?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, it's really important. I think there are two parts. One, the front part, it is attitude and the back part, it is character. We need to have both of these things. But attitude is the external part which is really important. And if you have a good attitude, positive attitude, then you can win the world. And there is nothing you cannot do. So I would like to keep one of the examples. We all know about Rishi Damala, right? We all know that he is not such a very talented person and but see his attitude, how positive he is. He doesn't care what anybody says, anything about him. And look at his popularity, look at his views, the views of his interviews in the YouTube. It is just because of his positive attitude. But if he, he also had some character, I mean, the qualities, the good qualities of a journalist, it would be so much better. But even the positive attitude can do a lot of things. And lately, we saw Bim Nirohla, right? He, he went to Britain's Got Talent and he was so much praised there. See, we know he also doesn't have that much of talent required for a singer, but he rocked that stage. So I think with a good positive attitude, you can do a lot of things. But at the same time, you need to develop the character needed to support this positive attitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Speaker Konshan. Anyone who would like to add anything on this topic, attitude, yeah, Pratik, go for it.
Okay. So I so attitude is, I think, all about confidence for me. I really believe in the saying fake it till you make it, you know? No matter how nervous you are, no matter how, you know, you don't feel like you can do this. If you fake it, then confidence automatically comes, I think. Once you go into a stage and once you start speaking, if you feel like, if you don't feel confident, it's always when you're finishing the speech, it's always when your time ends that you're starting to, all right, I can do this, I can do this. And then the time ends and you don't have any more time to speak. Another thing is recently I found this thing, imposter syndrome. Now, what this is, is apparently most people suffer from it, but rather than a disease, it is the feeling of being like, I'm not supposed to be myself or where I am. It's like, I don't know how to explain it exactly, but imposter syndrome is like this syndrome where you don't feel like you deserve to be where you are, but not in the depressing kind of way. But in the way of sometimes you just feel like, okay, I don't know what's happening in my life. I don't know what is going on, something like that. And that also is a thing about attitude. Comparing yourself with the past you is very normal for everybody to do. Everybody's doing it from a little child to a big adult. Even children who are at school say, when I was smaller, when I was a little child, even though they're still children, even I used to say that, I still say that, and I'm still not that big. So attitude, I think, is all about confidence. Faking it might seem like not the right thing to do in the, in the beginning. But once you start to really get confidence, you start to notice that no matter how much confidence you have, there's always going to be a nervousness. So you're always like nervous about what you're doing. So the best way to get your attitude is just be like, okay, it doesn't matter what I do. I'm just going to do this thing and then get it over it. And when you do that, you just start enjoying things more. Carefully doing the right things also, not just doing bad things like drugs and stuff, not like that, positive things. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Pratik. Thank you for your views. Anything, anyone else would like to speak on this?
I'd like to share something.
Yeah, please.
For me, the attitude is the humility. What I have found in our Nepali culture is that it's what I've found in Nepali culture is that we normally respect our elders, but we don't feel like respecting our juniors. So it is quite evident in our workplace as well. You can see your boss, your immediate boss acting like a very nicely to their seniors, but when it comes to their juniors, they don't act the same way. uh nicely to their seniors, but when it comes to their juniors, they don't act the same way. So I think uh, the humility is one of the key attitude for me, at least uh, to be successful in future. Yeah, Duslan wanted to share that one.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, our guests would like to speak on this topic, maybe Akshay, Manisha, Prashna, I think. So what do you think of attitude? I guess they have no intention to speak right now. Maybe we'll see you next meeting. Fred would like to share something? Maybe you are more experienced, so um.
I would be happy to. Thank you very much. I, there are so many things about attitude that I could say, but the humility that was mentioned is very important. If you want to be a leader, you have to think about other people more than yourself. And that comes down to most of us, especially when we're little children, it's all about us. But as we go older, and as you can see, I am older than probably most people here. You realize it's not about yourself, it's about the other people in your lives. And if you want to be a leader, you need that humility that was mentioned. And you need to probably listen more and the respect that was mentioned. You must give respect to all people, of all ages, of all backgrounds, of all religions. Uh, males and females working together and respecting each other. Respect is probably one of the most powerful elements. And if people respected each other and listened to each other and not said, I'm better than you. I think that attitude of other people are more important than your own can change the world because if you look around the world, a lot of problems and even wars have been caused. Because some people think they're better or they know more and they don't respect and listen to other people. So the attitude is uh, some of the most powerful businesses have been built by people who do not have a big ego. Egos can get in the way. It's all about them. And that is a big mistake. It's all about the other people that you're involved with, how you can assist them. So that to me is a very important attitude, which was mentioned, the respect and the humility. And and I know uh, one of the most powerful elements of a good leader is humility. So I thought that was a very relevant concept.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Fred. Now we'll move to our third session for today, which is meeting evaluation session. And to conduct the session, I would like to request speaker Pratik.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, meeting leader. So today I'm going to overall going with overall evaluator. I've already said what this session is all about. Evaluation is something that everybody, all of us needs to do, no matter what age we are, no matter which position we are. Evaluating yourself, thinking of yourself objectively, knowing what faults you have, knowing what improvements you can have is always important in any aspect of life. And that's what, you know, since humanity is all about, improving every sector everywhere, no matter where you are. So in a sense, evaluation is the most important part of our speakers meeting as well. So first of all, before we move on to the indirect evaluation, uh, the direct evaluation is happening of our speaker, our only speaker Ruskin Mohan. And today's direct evaluator for his speaking is Pratik Saravari. So I'd like to hand this to Pratik. Thank you, Pratik. Okay. So I'm the evaluator of Ruskin Mohan. Okay, you can start the time. So now I'll be evaluating his speech. So Ruskin gave a speech on his second project, speaking about things you like. And I think he spoke about investment and how much he liked investing. Now, there's a couple of guidelines that I need to follow. So I'll just say those things uh, in order first. Was the subject of the speech clear? Yes, the subject was clear. Was background provided or the things you like? Yes, he provided a background. Was there reasons and opinions offered about the things he liked and why he liked it? Of course, he offered plenty of reasons why he liked investments. Was the opening body and conclusion clear? Obviously, he started out with a personal thing, something near and dear to everybody, talking about finance and how we handle it. And he talked about the body about explaining what investment is, why you should do it, about his own experiences, and he concluded on what he thought about investment as a whole. It was very, very clear and it was refreshing to hear clearly. Was the speech natural? Yes, he naturally spoke. His body language, as much as I could see, was very, very natural. He spoke in a very calm manner, like he was in his own element, talking about things he enjoyed. Uh, body language, I couldn't see much because of the camera angle, but what he showed, it was absolutely great. Uh, your ex, the most, what was the thing that you liked the most in the speech? Your expressions. I really like the way you showed your expressions, you know? Maybe because I myself can show expressions that well in my speeches. Maybe that it was just jealousy, but I really liked the way you expressed yourself. It just, I could really feel the passion in your speech. One thing I'd like to say though, no matter how good you get, there's always room for improvement. So the one thing I'd like to say is vocal variety. The way you spoke while it was passionate, I think a little bit more spice, you know, in the vocal variety sector could be really appreciated. Uh, talking about some things like, uh, I, when you say the thing like, I faced a problem once. When I was investing in the beginning, I was embarrassed because I didn't have a lot of money. That part made you slow down a little bit. Talk a little bit more quietly because that makes people uh, pay more attention. And in some parts, speed up a little bit. You can look into detail. There's lots and lots of guides in the internet. And later on, you'll even have a project about vocal variety. But one thing that I think was missing was a little bit of vocal variety. You had some, a little bit more, we appreciate. All in all, your speech was perfect, frankly. It doesn't feel like you're doing your second project at all. So obviously you passed this project and I, I would love to see more of your projects and more of your speeches. So congratulations, Ruskin. Uh, hope to see more. So thank you, Pratik. Now over to overall evaluator. Thank you, Pratik. I'm the overall evaluator. So now the overall evaluator, uh, me, Pratik, I can continue the evaluation session. Now, before I go into the overall evaluation, we have some indirect role takers who worked hard this whole meeting to give us their evaluation reports. Without further ado, I'd like to call our grammarian, our speaker Konjan Razgiri, please.
Thank you very much, meeting evaluator. Our speaker Pratik. So I was listening to the use of your grammar today. So it was very tough stuff for me to point out the mistakes, though. But because most of the speakers, they spoke really well. They made very you, very good use of grammar. Some of them were our speaker Akshay, our speaker Ruskin, our speaker Fred and our speaker Pratik. They have very good grammar, I think. One thing I want to point out is, most of us have the habit of saying, good morning to everybody, good morning to because without to is more common. Good morning, everyone is more common than good morning to everybody. So this is it for grammar and the word of the day is used by only one of the speakers and he is known other than our speaker Ruskin Maharzan. So let's keep a big round of applause to him. Well done. And that's it. The grammarian report for the day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, our speaker Konjan Razgiri. Uh, even I haven't used the words today. It really slipped off my mind today. So thank you for reminding all of us. So the next evaluator we have is filler word counter as Nirmala AC. Please give us your report.
Thank you for the overall evaluated today's report in in our topic sessions. There is altogether three speaker who had give his an order space in in his speaker, Agorian speaker Sneha Adhikari. Had one, one R, one Oums, one short pause, no repetitions, has long pause in her speech. Agorian speaker Fred Jones has given mind blowing presentations, so I did not find any any R who saw a short pause, long pause in his speech. Akshya, another Agorian speaker Akshay has used only one R, no R, no Oums, short pause, long pause, repetitions in his speech. And in our, in our prepared speeches, there is only one speaker today. So Agorian speaker Ruskin Maharzan has used one R, one R more than two, three Oums, more than three repetitions, but no short pause, long pause. I had find in her speech. Thank you. And over to you for the meeting leader.
Okay, thank you very much, Nirwala K C, for your fantastic filler word report. Now, before we go into timing report, I like to give my overall evaluation report so that, you know, our timer can time me as well. So that I don't go over the time, abuse my authority. So overall evaluation. So today's meeting was a success, obviously. Because maybe due to a couple of hiccups of role takers uh, being forced to not be able to attend the meeting, but our meeting today was successful. We have many guests, all of, most of us participated, uh, but I got to see a lot of new members. So that was not, that was just the overall view, but let's go more into details. First, we had guest introduction, no problems over there. Meeting started on on time, mostly. It started on time, which is very nice. Our meeting evaluator introduced the roles. It was okay. The theme of the meeting was introduced that nothing was missed over there and everything went fantastically. Uh, the next thing that happened was hot topic session, our first session. Uh, hot topic master gave three questions. One thing I like to say to the hot topic masters, maybe give more emphasis into what hot topic session is, why it matters, how it is conducted. So that even if there are guests, there aren't guests, it doesn't matter. Knowing and reviewing what we know would be better because today I found a lot of people didn't speak for even one minute. So it would have been better for the hot topic master to give more emphasis on what hot topic is, like, why it's an impromptu session. How it will help them in communication, leadership or anything really. And that would have been a little bit better. The questions themselves were very nice. We had three speakers, Sneha, Fred and Akshay. Uh, all three of them gave fantastic speeches. Uh, Sneha's speech was a little bit short, but she told what she thought about. Uh, so thank you for the speakers. The next one prepares this session. We are Ruskin Maharzan as the speaker. And his evaluation was Pratik Saravari. And he gave a fantastic speech. I've heard Ruskin give speeches and take roles before, so I really wasn't doubting he wouldn't be able to speak really. Because I've heard how he speaks and this project should not happen. That because of problem, and he proved me correct by giving such a fantastic speech. Next one, the evaluation session. All of our evaluators give good evaluations. Our grammarian gave up one suggestion to all of us. And he also said what was good and about the word of the meeting. Yeah, word of the day should have been used more. I myself should have used more. That was it's vexing that most people didn't use it. Uh, our filler word counter obviously gave the report of the speeches and I'm giving oral evaluation. So the meeting itself was great. Talking about the preparation of the meeting, before the meeting, how the meeting leader prepared. Uh, this week I was a little bit busy, so I really couldn't concentrate that much for the first half of the week on overall really. So I only can give a report for the uh, later half of the week. I saw our meeting leader really uh, trying to make this meeting a success because last meeting we had to unfortunately not do a formal meeting and went to an informal session to lack of members. So our meeting leader this week really pulled through and brought enough members, enough role takers to do an official meeting. So I'd like everybody to please give a round of applause for our meeting leader, our speaker Bowen today for, you know, showing us we can do it. Next one, I'd like to thank every role taker today for coming and taking their roles and giving the time and giving the effort for the roles that they took. And thank you for guests for showing up. Attitude is always important into doing, even doing new things. You have to always have a positive attitude. Because without positive attitude, we can't be motivated and without motivation, we can't work. Thought goes within action, as they say. So that was my oral report. Thank you very much. Now, last but not the least, I'd like to call our speaker Kindle for timing report, please.
So once again, good morning, everyone. So in today's meeting, I took the time in report as said before. So in today's one hundred sixty fourth meeting, in hot topic speeches, speakers Sneha Adhikari took nineteen seconds. Her allocated time was two minutes and speaker Fred Jones has taken one minute twenty two seconds. His allocated time was two minutes as well. And speaker Akshay has taken twenty seven seconds. His time was two minutes. And in prepared topic situation, Ruskin Maharzan has taken four minutes forty seconds and his allocated time was four minutes. And in direct evaluation session, Pratik Sharma Corral has taken two minutes and forty one second. His allocated time was three minutes. In indirect evaluation session, grammarian Konjan Razgiri has taken one minute thirty seconds. Fill a word counter Nirmala K C has taken one minute twenty nine seconds. They are located times two minutes. And in overall evaluator, our speaker Pratik Sharma Corral has taken three minutes and fifty six seconds. And me myself as timer, I have taken one minute nine seconds. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kindle. Now, uh, this concludes the evaluation session. I hope everybody learned a lot. Those who spoke, obviously they got their evaluation. So I hope everybody improves themselves and take this, they take this positive criticism with a grain of salt rather than taking it personally. So with this, I'd like to thank everybody for being patient enough to listen to my ramblings and jokes and laughing with me all this time. So now I'd like to hand over the meeting back to the meeting leader, please.
Thank you, speaker Pratik and all the meeting evaluators, our indirect evaluators for delivering their report. And it was really a humorous session for us, so we could laugh in the session. And to continue our thematic discussion, I got to know that speaker Rusni want to share her thoughts on attitude is everything. So let's hear from speaker Rusni.
So once again, I'm here. It's about my personal experience. I want to add something. Like if it's about attitude, you must be humble, like as before mentioned, you must have uh, humility. But I think whenever I got in a situation of practicing situation like uh, my boss or my colleague or my best friend or my classmate, whenever someone gets angry on me, I just, it's, and I just get mourned and after some minutes, I give a simple smile. It sometimes it make them more angry, but after some seconds of, after some microsecond, they used to tell me that Rusni, you are just too bad. And I think it's okay being bad. If you, if my behavior makes you smile, then it's okay. So uh, what kind of attitude I have is I'm too much friendly. Sometimes it creates a problem, although I'm happy about it. So whenever you get in a situation, either it's in professional life or in your personal life, just be calm. Whatever someone says, just listen to them and after that react. But remember one thing, your humbleness, your kindness will give you a reward of satisfaction and that makes you best. So this is it. And attitude is something and everyone has a different attitude towards different uh, time and different situation. But one thing I have is I'm just too friendly and I just take a situation as an opportunity and I just give us I, maybe it's random, it's weird, but I do laugh a lot. So this is it.
Thank you, speaker Rusni. Do you have anyone else who likes to speak on this topic? Else will wrap up? I guess nobody is impressed. So let's wrap up our meeting. So talking about, you know, Agora, I have, we have few members waiting for the first time Agora to tell them what Agora, how you can improve to Agora is, you saw, you know, different session today. With inside different session, there are various rules, you know, fill a word counter, grammarian timer. You know, what filler word counter is, you've got to know from that report is what sort of filler you are using and how can you beautify your speech? Suppose you are using Suppose you are using some word repetitively, like so on also. If you are using this word repeatedly, then you can improve after their feedback. Next thing about this timing, if you're happy is, you know, speaking more than allocated time. Then you can improve. And next thing is, you've got to know how to summarize your speech within limited time. And next thing is about grammarian, where you've got to know about one word of the day in each meeting. And next thing you can improve by knowing how other people use grammar. What are the certain good uses of grammar and how can those grammar be improved? Another thing is, if you want to join Agora and you need to have patience really. Because when I joined Agora for the first time, I could speak only for ten second, I remember, in hot topic master. And later on, I improved gradually. And I can see my improvements in other meetings as well, my official meeting. When I'm with friends and I don't need to think much to speak on any particular topic. Gradually, you can also improve by yourself. The only thing you need to have is patience. You know, when you are at home, you can speak fluently. When you are at college with your friends, you can speak fluently. When you are in a meeting circle of your own friends, you can speak fluently. But the problem comes when there are different people from different field. You might not speak that fluently. So to, you know, reduce that sort of fear or to practice more. We organize this session called hot topic session, where you need to speak on your feet and deliver a topic instantly. So this is all about how our meeting goes. Hope you will improve in next meetings to come. We would like to see you in our next meeting. We would like to see you as a wonderful speaker, wonderful leader, wonderful communicator. And I would like to thank all of you for joining us. We wrap up today half hour ago because we have very few members, very few speaker. Most of the speaker have their own official meeting, please, could not be avoided because we have only one Saturday. And we have only one medium, it's an online medium, so we cannot shift our time as well. Thank you all of you for coming. See you next Saturday with new meeting theme, new word of the day, new role takers. Goodbye. Thank you all of you for joining.
Thank you. Thank you, meeting leader.